Good afternoon, it's 4:15. On Tuesday, September 3rd, the commence the meeting.
Okay, roll call. Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez, Commissioner Michael Pacheco.
Present.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo, Commissioner Ramiro Caballero, Commissioner Daniel Chavez.
Here.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
Present.
Commissioner Itza Flores.
Present.
We have a call.
A motion?
Move to excuse absent members.
Second. Others in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes. Pledge of Legions.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Lord, your word says to heartily at whatever we do, as for you and not for men, we pray that you would motivate us to do our work with excellence today. Help us to view our work as a blessing and give us grace and strength for the hardest aspects of our jobs. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Right, item two under Proclamations. We have Mr. Ray Perez here with PSJA ISD. If you want to come up.
Hi, thank you. Ray Perez with PSJA ISD. We are doing a project that is very special, 23rd anniversary of 9/11. And we have a lot of our students as well as our superintendent. So thank you for helping us.
Absolutely. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Ray. He's done this before, another times, and it's always a great success. And he's always inviting people, young people, especially the importance of voting. Thank you, Ray, again.
So I'll be reading the proclamation. So whereas national voters' registration is a day of civic unity, it's an opportunity to set aside differences, enjoy the rights, responsibilities, and opportunities we all share as Americans and celebrate our democracy together. And whereas by leveraging technology and the reach of our partners, we educate Americans about how to register, sign up for election reminders, request mail-in ballots, learn about early voting options, and more. And whereas more than 5 million voters across all 50 states have registered to vote on National Voters Registration Day, including 1.5 million in 2020. And whereas in K through 12 education, it is critically important that students learn about voting and elections and develop the civic competencies to fully engage in the democratic process, whether that is at the community, local, state, or national levels. And whereas students from PSJA ISD will enhance their understanding of the voting process and understand the value of civic responsibility. And whereas NVRD is a nonpartisan civic holiday dedicated to encouraging voters to register and participate in civic engagement. Now therefore, I, representing Dr. Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of Far, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me and behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the 17th day of September 2024 as National Voters Registration Day.
Dr. Elias, you want to say a few words?
Yes. Thank you to the City of Far for the partnership. Commissioners, thank you. This proclamation means a lot to PSJA. One is that we need to continue to educate our students as far as the voting. So I think that everybody that is at a young age needs to learn that their voice counts. And this is a way to enhance it and teach them that as an educational system, we can always get involved in educating them as far as the voting. So I think that this is something that with the partnership with the City of Far, it's going to extend that voice for the students and it'll take us a long way in educating them. So thank you.
Thank you. Because we have one more proclamation.
Let me make a comment about voting. You know, when you first know about voting, a lot of times you vote based on, especially for young kids, you go vote based on the way your parents or your family members vote in the past. And a lot of times it's important that you look at the candidate, not at the party, because the candidate is the most important part of the election process. And a lot of people say, well, you know, I'm going to vote Democrat because my family always votes Democrat. I'm going to vote Republican because my family always voted Republican. You need to look at the person running, what they have done, what they're going to do, and what their plan is. Don't go by what they tell you. Do some research before you go and vote. Because a lot of times people just vote because they've been told how to vote. That's not a way to vote. Because America is based on knowledge and people having the right to vote. But get educated. Learn about the person you're voting for and then go vote for him or her. So my advice for all the young people.
I just want to add a little bit on that. To all the students, my daddy always said, you need to vote. It doesn't matter. You need to vote. You need to voice your opinion so that you can be heard and you will be heard. So just make sure that every opportunity that you get, go out and cast your vote. That's your voice and it needs to be heard. You're important.
Can we introduce the students?
Yes.
All of the students here are representative of student council. So technically, they were elected by their peers in school as well as our representatives, ambassadors, right, were voted by our students. So they get a little bit of the voting process. And we also have awesome sponsors back there.
Thank you, sponsors.
Come on up, sponsors.
Hello. My name is Esma Perez. I'm here.
Hello, my name is Nidia Ruiz and I am representing PSJA Southwest as the Miss Havelina Jewel 2025.
Hello, my name is Janelle Correa and I'm representing PSJA North as the first ever Miss Royal Onyx Queen.
Hi, my name is Tais Cruz and I'm representing PSJA Bears as your Miss Diamond Queen 2025.
Good afternoon. My name is Luan Andrino and I am the Student Council President for PSJA Southwest.
Hello, my name is Marixareus and I'm the Student Council Sponsor for PSJA Southwest.
Hello, my name is Sosolcha representing PSJA Memorial Early College High School and I'm Student Council President.
Hello, my name is Emily Flores and I'm Student Council President for Thomas Jefferson Early College High School.
Hi, I'm Miguel Mendez from PSJA Thomas Jefferson Tista and I'm 12th grade rep.
Hi, my name is Joanna Trevino. I am representing PSJA Early College High School and I am the Senior Class President.
Hi, my name is Joshua Lasso and I'm representing PSJA North as the PSJA North Student Body President.
Hi, my name is Valerie Garcia. I am representing PSJA Collegiate as the Stuko President.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Ortiz and I am representing PSJA Collegian as the Student Council Student Class President, sorry.
Hi, I'm Miranda Wajardo and I am the Student Council Advisor at PSJA Collegiate.
Hello, my name is Joan Cantú. I'm representing PSG Memorial and I'm representing the Texas Association of South Texas Vice President.
Hi, my name is Aaron Lozano and I am the Student Council Advisor for PSG Memorial Early College High School.
Good afternoon. My name is Karina Duran and I am the Student Council Advisor for PSG Early College High School.
Evening. Renaldo Marquez, Assistant Superintendent for Academics.
Can you come over to the back?
Where's it? It's up here. It's under the mayor's agenda, the proclamation, right there. Under there. Yes.
All right, next we have item 2B, Proclamation Honoring and Remembering the 23rd Anniversary of September 11th at PSJA ISD.
So this was the first one, right?
Second.
Second, okay. No, but I messed up. My other one was the 23rd Anniversary of 9/11. It was the one on voting.
Oh, yes.
The one that you did right now. So this is a very important request from the city so that our students never forget. They're Z-generation students. And so technically, they don't connect to 9/11 because everything they see is on videos or experiences we lived through it, right? But we don't want our students to forget about it. We want our students to remember. We want our students to value the fact that Americans lost their lives in a very tragic day. And so here they are today again to be part of the remembrance. And they are actually working on the project themselves. They're delivering speeches, poems, and they're honoring firefighters, EMS, and all the other responders that we have. So it's really for them to carry as a memory and remember that 9/11 should never be forgotten. So that's something beautiful.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. I know you've done this before and I would like to walk you back to PSJA.
Thank you.
So I'll be reading the proclamation. Whereas the City of Far and all its residents desire to express their sorrow for the 2,983 people who died in Manhattan at the Pentagon and in Pennsylvania Field on September 11th of 2001 in what remains the deadliest act of terrorism in U.S. history. And whereas the land of the free, while grief-stricken, became one nation united, resolved, and determined. Whereas terrorists not only attacked American institutions and cultural history, they also attacked American principles and we, the people. And whereas the City of Far and PSJA ISD honor individuals and families who were directly affected by the September 11th tragedy. Whereas we, the American people, will keep the flame of freedom lit for those Americans that died in the tragedy. And whereas the City of Far and its neighboring cities and PSJA ISD also honor and recognize local heroes who contributed to improving the quality of life for everyone here at home. Now therefore, I, Michael Pacheco, in representation of Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of Far, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim September 11th, 2024 as honoring and remembering the 23rd Anniversary of September 11th at PSJA ISD. Thank you. Want to take another picture again? We got one? No, we got it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you, Ray.
The proclamation?
Oh, yeah.
We need to have him sign it.
Yeah.
You should sign it, Danny, so he can...
Yeah. Anybody for public testimony? Public hearings? All right, under City Manager's Report, item 5A, we have the City Engineers Report. Mari is here to answer any questions, if you guys have any. And next we have Yudi with our City Events of Interest.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Yudi Gonzalez with your Office of City Communications. For the record, just a couple of announcements for upcoming events and two recaps. The first event was hosted at the DRC Center. This is in South Far and that was Lucha Libros. This was an event spearheaded under Adolfo with the library. It's promoting literacy during a back-to-school event. So here's a recap.
We have Lucha Libros at the DRC. This event started five years ago as an event to get kids motivated to go back to school and to partner up with South Texas Literacy Coalition to give out free books to all the kids who may not have books at their home.
It's our five-year anniversary. I remember bringing him, like pitching it to him, like, hey, I have a wrestling promotion we just started and I love books and why not, like, put it together, you know? And he came up with Lucha Libros. And I was like, that's fantastic.
Just thankful for this kind of events. We really enjoy them. And it's, you know, a good event to bring the whole family. You get free books and you teach your kids about how important it is to read.
The fact that this event is free is something that is very cool to me. This helps a lot on bringing more people in and getting the familiar with the people that work here in the community and again, for the vendors as well.
This is one of the ways that we promote our collections, promote our partnerships with South Texas Literacy Coalition, the Wrestling League, and kind of tie those two events together to bring the families out and making sure that they continue reading throughout the summer and also before school and throughout the school year.
So there you go. That was Lucha Libros. Saying again, people really enjoyed this event. It was a packed house. Our next event is actually a birthday, a very special birthday we celebrated for a Far resident. This is Ms. Juanita Salas' 108th birthing. She's a resident of the Colonial Manor and this is an adult rehab and healthcare center. Our city leadership went out there and celebrated her birthday in a very special way. So let's look at the recap.
It's a great feeling to have a mother this long. However, it's... I don't know if I want to live this long. It's a good life. But one of the fortunate things is she's well taken care of here.
I was very sick. I'm around here and I like to come here to see the people. They listen to the music and sometimes they talk about something and I like to hear it.
She's not much of a party person. She doesn't like big things or anything little. I mean, we had a hardship just getting her to come in here today. But when she's here, she had a wonderful time. Of course, the City of Far made it fabulous. It was so wonderful to have y'all here, bring her the gift, give her the presentation. Having y'all here is wonderful.
You know, here at the City of Far, we're all about community. It's so important to our elected officials and to our leadership team that we come out and we enjoy our community as much as we can. And today's a very special day celebrating Juanita Salas, joining her family, and celebrating her 108th birthday. It's awesome to be able to be here and do that.
I feel good and happy that I've done that. Yes, even me.
God leads us to places. He has a plan. And being here with mother today is one of them. Special.
Thank you.
That was nice.
That's very nice.
Thank you to the administration. Good job, guys.
Jonathan and, you know, Ms. Il La Pedraza out there and, you know, the family reached out the next day just very happy and very heartfelt that our city leaders were out there. Okay, our next flyer is the Avocado Festival Press Conference. And this is happening tomorrow at our Far One Building at 11:30 a.m. This is to welcome our media partners to go out there and learn about this great event, the details, the headliners, learn about the vendors, the reason why we're putting this great event together this October 12th in downtown Far, and just get exposure. And this is, you know, the moment where pretty much the advertising and marketing will be out in the entire community. We have special guests. We have great panelists that will be discussing the reason why we're hosting this great event from our Chamber of Commerce, from EDC, from superintendents in our community that are getting involved. Our city manager, Dr. Flores, will also be there. So we really encourage everyone, you know, to join us tomorrow at 11:30 a.m. This press conference will also be livestreamed for those that want to tune in and just, you know, watch from home. Our next event is spearheaded by our police department. This is a Stick-by-me event. This is a fourth annual Suicide Prevention Awareness Fair. This is hosted with many resources on a very delicate and sensitive subject, but something that is a reality in our community, in our region, in the nation. And so our police department and our community engagement departments under PD and the mental health unit as well, they all come together and they put tents, resources, information, really interact with our community and they will be there. They also do a walk and this is at the Birding and Nature Center. And this happens every year. And the Stick-by-me, the reason it's Stick-by-me is because we do glow sticks at night. And so when we're walking through this trail, you know, this light is a remembrance of those who are no longer with us. A very special event that happens every year and it's growing every year. So we really encourage, you know, our community to come out there, whether they've lost a loved one or not. September 6th, this is happening from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. And we have additional information on our social media platforms if anybody wants to get involved. And our last event is the Pet Wellness Fair. This is spearheaded through the Animal Care Services. So if you have little furry creatures, little furry friends, cats, dogs, bring them out there. This is happening September 29th, which is on a Sunday. The registration went up this morning and we already have 250 families that have registered that want to come out and get their, you know, their little doggies with the rabies vaccines. And we'll also have information regarding the PAWS program. So we have Mr. David Freeland here if there's any questions regarding that program or that device. It's a microchip device that we're going to start introducing to our community throughout these events or any other events that are related, you know, to pets and wellness. So once again, this Pet Wellness Fair is happening September 29th from 9:00 to 11:00 p.m. I'm assuming there's a cutout number for those registrations. But as of now, registration is still up on social media and we're at 240-some families that have registered. Any questions? Okay, thank you. This concludes the City Manager's Report, Events of Interest.
Next, we have item 6, Consent Agenda. All items listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion.
You have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Others against? Motion passes. And according with section 551-071 to 551-087 of the Texas Government Code, the Far Board of Commissioners hereby gives notice that it's conjoining to executive session to discuss the items listed in the public portion of the meeting agenda. The time is now 4:41. Okay, it's 5:41. Back in session from executive meeting.
All right, item 7A, Consideration in Action of Any Ratifying Resolution Number R-2024-49 Establishing a Community Revitalization Plan for the Revitalization Area Surrounding the Affordable Housing Development Known as Lakeview Villas Apartments.
Do you have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second. Others in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes.
Item 7B, Consideration in Action of Any on Resolution Appointing Stakeholders Group for the Comprehensive Plan Update. Tilda, you want to go over the...
Yes, so we have Commissioner Bobby Carrillo, Commissioner Michael Pacheco, Commissioner Ricardo Medina, Commissioner Daniel Chavez, Danny Wiley, Ramiro Gutierrez, Romeo Cantú, Marty Moore, Rafael Mungia, Danny Smith, and Mari Caballero.
Move for approval.
Have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes.
Item 7C, Consideration in Action of Any on Resolution Appointing Assistant City Clerk. Staff recommends Alessandra Garcia.
Have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second. Others in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes.
Congratulations. All right, item...
Is she here?
Is she here? Yep.
Good evening.
Well, welcome to the team. You're my la.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Welcome.
All right, item 8A, Consideration in Action of Any on Submitting Entitlement Vote for Candidate to the Texas Municipal League Region 12 Director Election. Staff recommends the vote go to Sebi Hadad.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes.
Item 9A, Consideration in Action of Any Authorizing City Manager to Purchase One New 2023 FE Trolley Villager Gasoline for Public Works from Specialty Vehicles from Henderson, Nevada for the amount of $226,697.67 through the Houston Galveston Area Council Contract Number BT01-21.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes.
Item 10A, Consideration in Action of Any Authorizing City Manager to Award a Construction Contract for the Commercial Vehicle Parking Area in the amount of $11,888,058.76. Staff recommends the IOC Company.
Do you need to change the amount?
Oh, correct. We need to change the amount. What's the amount on that? Be $12,290-043.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes.
Item 10B, Consideration in Action of Any Authorizing City Manager to Award a Construction Contract for the Donations Acceptance Program for Fiscal Year 2016 to De Wilson Construction Company from McAllen, Texas in the amount of $45,253,972.12.
Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes.
Item 10C, Consideration in Action... Actually, Item 10C, we're going to table that item.
Move to table.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes.
Item 10D, Consideration in Action of Any Authorizing City Manager to Negotiate and Execute Amendment Number 7 in the Amount Not to Exceed $574,000 with Half Associates Inc. from McAllen, Texas for the Donations Acceptance Program Fiscal Year 2016.
Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes. I didn't say a comment. We have just approved two items for DAP 16, something we've been waiting for a long time. So it's really exciting. We just had the bridge, now the DAP 16. It just shows, you know, that the vision of our great mayor of Far, Ambrosio Hernandez, is coming, and it's coming very fruitful. So thank you for everybody working hard on these projects.
All right, Item 10A, Consideration in Action of Any on Amendment Number 7 in the Amount of $12,000 to the Professional Engineer Services Agreement with Structural Engineering Associates Incorporated from San Antonio, Texas for the Far Reno Center International Bridge Expansion Project.
Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes.
Move for adjournment.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have ended. It's 5:47.